You're doing an admirable job.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Our hour is seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order the special meeting of Laconia City Council scheduled for Monday, May 4th, oh, June 4th, I'm sorry, at this hour. And we'll begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I'd ask that you please rise and join Counselor David Bowens with us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call a roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bowens?
Here.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Counselor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Engler?
Present.
Spoil it. Spoil it.
It's a contrarian tonight. Note for the record that Counselor Hamel is traveling tonight and will not be here, although I do anticipate that he will be part of our meeting later on tonight via telephone as he was a couple of weeks ago. We only have one order of business tonight for this special meeting, and that is to hear four department presentations regarding the fiscal year 2019 budget, but we will be having two non-public sessions at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. So Counselor Hamel is going to join us for the second of those two non-public sessions via telephone. Okay? All right. Let's record show then that five of the six counselors are present this evening, and a quorum has been established for this meeting. And we're going to start tonight's presentations with Public Works. And we have Mr. Wes Anderson, the Director of that department, with us this evening. Welcome. And so the floor is yours, sir. Okay. Is that slide one and two?
Slide two already. What we're going to cover tonight is the general fund. Talk about general fund capital side, then we'll go into the special funds, the sanitary sewer and the internal service. Just to bring everyone up to date, general fund for Public Works is actually two separate accounts, one titled Public Works Budget, and you'll find out in page 90. Later on in that section, you'll find one for solid waste. They're both out of the general fund. Give you an idea of where we sit, for those budget lines that are over $100,000, that's what's in front of you right there. All the rest of my other budget on the general fund side comes up to about $231,000. So if we have an issue with any of those counts, basically, I've got to pull another one, no, it out from one of those other counts that you see in front of you. Some operational changes on the solid waste side. I recently talked to Guilford, and they still believe that sometime in the next year, they'll have their transfer station open. What that means for us is really no increase or change in our expenditures, but we'll see a reduction in revenue of someplace around $45,000 because we get $5 per ton for every ton that comes through. On the recycling collection processing side, you're familiar with it already. The new contract we have with Casella for handling recycle is all based off of commodities and tonnage. In this particular year, thanks to the adjustments, we should not have a shortfall, but again, it's all commodity-based and depends upon what happens with the prices, whether we'll have a shortfall in that line for the upcoming year. By the end of this fiscal year, we'll be down to one recycling site other than the curbside collection, and that's going to be at the Meredith Center Transfer Station. So residents will still be able to bring their recycling up there at no cost. They won't have to buy a dump sticker if they're only bringing recycling up. We're going to have a cardboard corrugated cardboard site at the Public Works Messer Street Garage. However, because it's in the exact same footprint of what we have right now, we have to get the old equipment out, prep the site, and then put the machinery in. So at the earliest, it's probably that third week in July, could be later than that. And then, just to bring you up to date, ton of solid waste right now is $83 a ton disposal cost, and for the processing and fee to sell it, it's $113 done in April. We just got May's, and it dropped from $113 a ton for recycled down to $108.40. So that's probably the new paradigm and the new shift someplace in that $110 range. We'll see what happens as time goes on.
Counselor Littman has a question.
So what is the annualized value of recycling, the incremental cost based on our tonnage?
Right now, what we're anticipating is, let me pull that up. The last estimate that we had for recycling was someplace around 400 to 420,000, depending upon what happens with the rate.
Tons?
Ton, per, total. Based off when I did that was $113 per ton.
The $420?
$424,000.
That's what I'm getting at is, I guess, that's enough money where, I guess, I think the council should make a policy decision as to whether, you know, we want to subsidize recycling to that degree. I mean, that we're taking away from other things.
I think you, so that's the net cost to get rid of recyclables at the 110 or 113 a ton. So we'd be saving the difference of $25 a ton times the number of tons. So does that equate to, can we do the quick math, so how many?
It's 1,730 tons about a year we do for recycling.
1,730 tons at $20 to $30 a ton could be $30,000 to $50,000 difference. And right now, we're just beginning the process. As you know, we have not eliminated the remote recycling locations of which that tonnage is included in that figure. So, and we've just started asking residents not to put glass in the recycling and to put that in the solid waste. So we're definitely going to be monitoring it very closely, but it may take us a few months to see how those two pieces play out with it first.
While we're speaking about glass.
You always do so. Sorry, Counselor Bowens.
Are there any prospects in the near future? And I'm talking five or 10 years of seeing some kind of a glass recycling entity within our reach?
I would expect not. I think what's probably going to go to, it's going to be more of a case of reuse, where they're going to crush the grass and turn it into some form of aggregate to put in sidewalks or underneath sidewalks or something. I don't think the money's there anymore to make it worthwhile to recycle glass, although stranger things have happened depending upon what happens with the productivity of it.
Is that regional? I mean, New England, is it?
From what I understand, there's one going to be coming online sometime in the next six months down in New Jersey. And then it's going to be, you know, what's the cost effectiveness hauling it down to there?
There's probably not a short-term answer, but I think collectively in the region, those who use the various solid waste haulers could certainly have conversations with those folks about single stream. And right now, they're sorting the glass as they are all of the different components of recycling, but they are taking that glass and landfilling it at this point. Could be conversations that maybe within future contracts, we look to require them to have some kind of a glass crusher and crush it where they're separating it as opposed to putting in a landfill and making it available as for an aggregate for construction projects as Wes has mentioned. Certainly, conversations could be had at the legislative level to see if that's something that they want to put into the specs along with some crushed gravel for road base for projects as a way of reusing it as opposed to recycling it. But there's probably nothing quick and easy on the horizon for that in the next year or two. I do hear from some folks who read about other communities who might have a glass crusher at their recycling station. Those are typically smaller communities where people are still putting their recyclables in the car and driving them to those facilities and separating them. Sort of have a glass crusher at a facility works for that particular scenario. Or we're doing the curbside and it's mixed. It's, we've got folks, you know, I'll set to put it out at the curb. I'm not sure the willingness or our space capacity to encourage everybody to start bringing recyclables and sorting them again, in particular glass, so that it could have a reuse. So those are a couple of the things that we can work toward, but it's not going to be a quick answer.
Well, I've seen that, I won't take up much more time. I've seen that Guilford is talking about doing exactly that, and I'm just wondering if it's feasible for Guilford, whether it's feasible for us.
Guilford doesn't have curbside collection, so when a resident takes it to their side, it's already separated. That's the major difference.
That's the difference. Okay.
And we do about 10,900 tons roughly a year for trash. Some operational changes in the general fund side. All the LED streetlights are up. We're still working through some issues that we have in correcting the ledger with Eversource. And additionally, there are still some lights out there that were, they're having problems with in their side getting them up and running, and we're working with them closely. In this budget, there's no additional funding, no additional funding program for other lights to be added to the city, so anything that we want to add, we'll have to take it out of another account. Basically, what we have in that line, we'll just pay the utility bill. We did start an equipment sharing program with Belmont. Basically, when they have need, we loan them our Vector with our operator to clear any sanitary sewer or stormwater blockage. In exchange, they loan us their grader with their operator to help us with maintaining our gravel roads. So it's really no cost to the city. We just keep swap equipment back and forth to provide each other some support. Last year, and we're going to continue this year, we began an in-house ditch maintenance program. Part of our issue with maintaining our roads is keeping the drainage going, and a lot of our roads have ditches versus, you know, culverts or pipe. We haven't been cleaning them, so we're trying to get those cleaned up so that the roads stay in better condition. Again, if there are any other operational needs other than what's in the budget, we're really, from my standpoint, talking highway maintenance and winter maintenance is where the only other source I have to pull that money from. We're looking at, from the winter maintenance standpoint, what ways we can do to lower our cost with our biggest cost being salt. We did finally, over this last fiscal year, purchase sliding salters for all of our dump trucks, so we're gradually getting rid of all of our standalone salters. Additionally, we're going to calibrate them over the summer/fall timeframe so we can get good control of how much salt we put down, and then we'll put more control against what concentration they're putting down on the road, so we're not wasting any by over-salting the roads. And we'll see how that works to get it. The only other pieces that we have, of course, is overtime associated with winter maintenance and vehicle rent, which is all based off of how many hours we have to do plowing operations or salting operations. Did my best to maintain the funding levels for our sign program, our parking and traffic control, the tree removal, and the in-house storm water drainage system repairs. Signs, and you'll see more of it later, we have a retroreflectivity requirement. Basically, we've got the signs have to be new enough that the amount of light they reflect back towards the drivers meet a certain standard. It's a nationwide standard that we have to meet. Parking and traffic control, traffic signal maintenance that pays for as well as long-line striping. And in this particular case, our parking kiosks will be, have added to that. We'll talk more further. Tree removal, if it's one where property owners won't cooperate, that's where we pull the money from to redo, to remove any trees that we can't handle in-house with our own crews. And for the most part, especially this time of year, right after we get through winter, a lot of our efforts all focus on catch basin repairs. You'll see all the marks we've been doing. Generally, what happens, some of the structure underneath it fails during the winter from the frost heat cycle, and we spend the first month to two months just trying to go through and get them all repaired before drivers fall through it with their vehicles. Some new programs that we had, the Frank Bean Burn Dump Road. We anticipated at the start last year with having to do our ground well monitoring. It did, but we're still basically in the initial stages of finalizing all the documentation with Department Environmental Services. That was finished, so this is the first full year that we have this as normal, one of our normal operational programs coming up from my operational budget. So between this and the PFAS testing, which all landfills are required to do in this upcoming fiscal year. PFAS is that same compound, that PFOA, other names for it that they issued with the St. Gobain piece. That, I'm estimating, we're going to be someplace between around $35,000, $40,000, $50,000 that we'll be spending this year just to meet those two requirements. And then the parking kiosks, this is our first full year of operation. Warranty has expired because it's already been a year since we put in, so this is the additional cost that I had to budget for to run our parking kiosks up at Lakeside. Retroreflectivity, we've already discussed it to a degree, but over the last year, we've been getting our system in place such that whenever we put a new sign out, we have a location, we have the date and time, we put it up, so we know when it goes up. And as time comes available, we're starting to record where the existing signs are. Because basically, you've got two options on how to maintain it. You either replace it on a certain set age, or every year, you've got to do a retroreflectivity test on it. It's less manpower, less cost involved in just changing it on a certain time. And we'll be looking at it to change it out in the 12 to 15-year timeframe. On the changing sides, we're going to the capital piece. Again, everything we're looking at, road-wise, we always look first to make sure there's any drainage system repairs that we need to do. So when we do a road project such as what you see in North Main Street right now, we're making sure all the catch basins and all the structures underneath are repaired prior to resurfacing the road. And that's what we're working on now, and that's our habit with all of our roads. Underneath the road maintenance program, this is our first full year, and Court Street is our test of it. We've done soil testing to determine what the capability of the pavement, excuse me, capability of the ground underneath it is capable of supporting the road. And additionally, we're also doing compaction testing as the progress progresses to make sure the contractor is meeting compaction standards. Again, the objective is to keep good roads good and manage the pavement condition rating. You've seen the crack sealing program that we've done, and you'll see how many miles that we've done with that new program. Additionally, we're looking at adding some other techniques that really give a life, longer life to roads at a lesser cost. We are looking at going to the next step in our pavement management program, and that's taking it and developing a five and additional five-year plan to determine a plan so that we can synchronize with the water department and the sewer piece, so we're all acting together there in the year before, before we are scheduled to do work, so they can get all their work done before we come in behind them. Okay. This is what we have done over the past few years. Each color represents a different action. In the case of reclaim and overlay and milling overlay, that's the blue color. It was a little bit too complicated to go to another line and represent it, but that's what we've done. Basically, for the last fiscal year, we did 9.7 miles, of which approximately six was crack sealing, and the rest were other forms. We did 1.4 reclaim and overlay, 1.2 milling overlay, just around three tenths of a mile for a shim. That's what we did in this past fiscal year. For planning purposes, based off of where we think we'll be assuming 1.5 million a year for it and what we have to take out for bond, you can see in that bottom line, that's what we'll be planning for each year for the purposes of road improvement programs. And that'll be what we work with with Water Works and the sanitary sewer for planning. These are particular programs that we have on the capital side. The ones you see at the top group, the annual programs, those are the ones we typically get money every year for. Road maintenance of the pavement management program, stormwater drainage, sidewalks. We're getting ready to put out an on-call contract similar to what we have with Busby for the road so that we can do large quantities of sidewalk every year. That's also the line where we'll do whatever modifications we need to do to improve crossings such as bump outs at Vista or on Beaker Street West or any roads like that. Fence guard rail and retaining wall are programs that we're working on, as well as bridge maintenance and repair, stormwater engineering and parking garage inspection and repairs. And we'll talk more about that piece later. Particular projects that we have coming up for the year is the weird boardwalk retaining wall, that north end, you've got that concrete wall. If you walk the gravel road down to the Mount Washington, if you turn, you'll see how eroded it has come over the years. That railing's at the point where we've modified it and fixed it enough to get it through this tour season, but we need to get it changed out before next tour season. There's not enough concrete to retain that, keep that retaining wall in place. Langley Brook is just an initial allocation that we can put and say to NHDOT that we've, we're committed to it. Maybe gives us a little bit more leverage to get in, get that bridge listed in the municipal state bridge aid program. Downtown pedestrian bridge, it's starting to get to the point where we need to do an assessment. This will pay for the initial engineering study, some basic sand blasting to determine what needs to be done to it so we can program it for later on. Moren Road landfill.
What bridge was that?
Pedestrian Bridge. Right down here.
Oh, this one?
This one.
I can't read that, so.
Yep. Then the Moren Road landfill is our third landfill that we have. It's across the street from Moren Road from the old Frank Bean burn dump. That's the next one that we're, we are going to have to do with desks to take the appropriate actions to remediate it. And then the last one is my actual building itself. If you haven't been in there recently, we have an extreme settlement problem because the building sits on about seven feet of peat moss. And underneath the floor of the building, there is gap that varies between about six inches and 18 inches of airspace. That floor is designed to rest on the ground, and it isn't. About three weeks ago, we had what we were expecting to happen at some point. The settlement was enough that it put pressure on the cast iron water main that came into the building, cracked it, and luckily, we were there when it cracked, and we were able to control the flooding. If it had done it at night, we probably would have lost a good amount of our records as the building was flooded, would have flooded out. The object of that is determine what can we do to stabilize the building and if it's even cost-effective to stabilize that old building and just build a new one.
When was this built?
50s. It was the old Oldsmobile place.
Yeah, that was the old Nanta garage.
Manta.
Much as the peat moss were. Probably not enough to pay for it, although the site may be of interest to certain automotive dealers. Okay, for reviewing the capital projects of the bonds that we have coming, so we're all on the same sheet. 2018, of course, we're already working Court Street from Fair to the bridge. We're doing, going to do Elm to Stark as soon as Labor Day gets passed so we can start that project. And then Messer Street Drainage is again scheduled for after, as the drawdown happens. So it reduces our costs and gives, makes it a little bit easier to construct that project. We know based off the price estimate that we're going to have to supplement that project with the normal annual stormwater drainage program money we get from this fiscal year that we're currently in, 18, and we're going to have to use some of the money from 19. We're still looking to see if we're going to need additional money for that, and we're planning that now to see if we've got a phase at one more to get it into fiscal year 2020. 2019, we'll do Union Ave from Main to Guilford. And that fall after Labor Day and before Columbus Day is what we're targeting for is to do the Court Street Bridge by Dirkie Bridge using accelerated bridge construction. In other words, they'll build the bridge beside it, take the old one out, put the new foundation or retaining walls in, and just drop it in place. And then in 2020, we're, we are planning now for additional $1 million in bond using the money from the municipal highway fund, that share that comes from the vehicle registration fees to help pay for the next phase, which is going on Court Street from Fair to Main Street. On the sanitary sewer fund side, some of the changes we did, we had a minor organizational structure change. We basically, because of the economy and the lack of people, we couldn't hire someone to work on our sanitary sewer side. So we changed the organization a little bit, made it more attractive, and we got, we're back up to staff. On the future aspects, one of the things we do have to do is update our sanitary sewer ordinance. Particularly, we have to make sure it reflects the fact that all private sewer systems in the city that connect to a public system have to turn in all the same reports to us that we have to turn into Department of Environmental Services and EPA. The WRP has a goal that they've established now to get the new cost allocation system, i.e. how much do we pay for our share of Winnipeg River Basin by January 2019. We are also looking, from our standpoint, we've already briefed you once, if and how to fund expansion of the system, that includes into areas that are already developed and into areas that may be come up for future development. We're talking and looking at what do we need to keep on hand as an designated reserve to pay any bills in case of emergency. And as part of that, we're looking at what, what's our rate increase plan. We anticipate we're going to have to come to council sometime this fiscal year for a rate increase. We're working now with a consultant to determine how much that is.
How many private systems do we provide CMOM reports or whatever you call them?
We had, although we've been required to do it, they haven't been because we haven't had the leverage to do it. Every single private system that's in the city has to do it. So Southdown, Long Bay, Wildwood, you know, all the others that are out there are going to have to do it and turn it into us. And basically, it's the exact same thing. What are you doing to maintain your system? What are you doing to maintain the longevity, you know, through capital improvements over time?
So those reports are not being prepared now?
Correct. That's something that we've got to get going.
And you expect to do that through an update of the sewer ordinance?
Correct. We're going to have to require it in the sewer ordinance for the private systems to turn it into us. Any of the new ones that are coming up, like Langley Cove or the others, we're making them ensure that it's included in the covenants or their homeowners association documents, so it'll be required submittal to us.
That we're requiring in the condominium documents themselves?
Correct.
Before we, before we bring them forward. And so I'm just trying to understand how much, how far behind are we, and is that a problem?
It, it was something that they imposed upon us. There's many municipalities that are now coming up to get their private systems in line with that. So we are not, we are, we are behind, but we're just as behind as the other organizations, the other municipalities.
We're all taking up the rear, huh?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. For this fiscal year, basically, what we completed to date is the Court Street will be done or be near done by the end of the fiscal year, and we finished the sanitary sewer work on the Bowman Baldwin piece. We have the new pump station that's in operation at Gold Street that gets the sanitary sewer flow from basically the Lakeport Main Peninsula side across the river to the Lakeport Landing site. And then we had one pump station, we replaced a pump and added some, basically a grinder to break down the large flow that comes through. What we see coming up for the next few years, we're going to prioritize on replacing undersized mains whenever we have a road project such as Court Street or Union Ave. Additionally, we'll be upgrading older mains that are properly sized mainly through lining. We're working still to get, save up for our Vector, our truck that we currently have cleans out our sanitary sewer systems, is getting old, and we'll probably be replacing that in either very tail end of this fiscal year or the beginning of next fiscal year. Pump station improvements continuous as the systems wear. And then you always have to keep your sewer inflow and infiltration study to make sure pipes aren't breaking, you're getting more water into it than sanitary sewer flow. My last is the Internal Service Fund. That basically is the money that we collect from all the departments, including my department, to maintain the vehicles in the various departments. Mainly, it's impacted by cost of fuel, the age of the fleet, and whatever warranties that we've bought with the vehicle when it came in. When the warranties expire, we pick up more of the costs. On a short-term basis, we've already started some of the improvements in the system. We're continuing to prepare the department for the computer-based diagnostics that are out there with all the new heavy trucks, and we've obtained the software for the international trucks with the Cummins engine and the Allison transmissions as well as the brakes, and they've, all the mechanics have been trained on it. We've got to keep those skills up so they can maintain it. You basically, if you can't run a computer and you can't operate that software, you can't fix a truck anymore if they're so complicated. And then the long-term plan is to update the Internal Service Fund procedures. Other actions we're looking at was we're still working on the private road issues that we maintain the problem. Other actions we're looking at was we're still working on the private road issues that we maintain the problematic streets. We're about halfway through the analysis of each individual street. We spend most of our time doing that in the winter when the, the engineering staff is not as engaged in keeping the projects up to date. Uh, so we anticipate getting the re- the rest of that done this year. Uh, we'll, we'll work closely in conjunction with the fire department on the double utility poles that you see out there. Uh, we determined that part of the issue that we had on that was that we are not part of the utility system. We have fire alarms on a lot of our poles. When a utility moves its poles, it's, it feeds into a computer system that it has saying, "I have done my move" and automatically sends an email message or a system message to the next person in the line to move off. Since we weren't part of that, we weren't getting information to ever source the others that we were cleared and now the other utilities can do it. So we've gotten into that system with ever source. We're feeding them the information and we're trying to catch up now on which poles have fire alarms on them, which don't, and then feed that information to ever source to catch up. Uh, we're continuing to work on city policies to manage the expectations of the department as it regards to customer service and so the customers know what we can and cannot do for them. Uh, the parking garage, we have a little bit of money each year that we get for safety. I'll call it the safety inspection and the repair of that which is necessary to keep it eligible or being able to use that second de- floor deck in the parking garage. Between, not last September, December, Tembr- before that and last September, the amount of corrosion, the amount of problems that we saw jumped faster than we anticipated. We had to do a lot more work than is expected. I am expecting that to continue that way as that building gets older and older, more rust comes ex- exposed. So in September, we'll go back out, we'll, we'll check all the ramps, all the decking on it to see what condition is and we'll execute those necessary repairs. But we'll need to, long-term wise, we need to develop a plan of what we're gonna do to either replace the garage or fix the garage. The last piece, uh, is the ADA self-assessment.
Stop you there for just a second. So the last I heard on that was that the TIF Advisory Board was requesting a meeting.
I think a long time, many months ago now, they requested that the council assign that to a committee and I believe it went to, or it was targeted to go to the Land and Buildings Committee. And I believe Counselor Hamel was gonna connect with the Chair of the Downtown TIF to-
I think they have had a conversation.
So I'm not sure that a meeting has happened, but I know that, that happened many months ago.
They had an informal conversation.
Okay, so I don't think an official land and, I, I, I know an official land and buildings committee meeting with the garage as a topic has not occurred. So that's certainly something that we should-
So maybe, maybe when we meet officially next week and have a full agenda, we oughta flag that on the agenda just to see what the, what the status of that conversation is.
Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The last piece for, for the discussion and it's really open for your questions is the American Disability Act self-assessment. Uh, that is a mandatory requirement, it's existed since nineteen ninety-three. We've gotta make sure we get caught up to date with it. It's a complete assessment of all aspects of the city's operations, not just infrastructure, but it's everything from the website to the buildings, to the roads, any policies that we have. Uh, that's required to be done. Uh, staff-wise, we've gotta get some of the problematic streets out of the way, then we're gonna have to tackle that one next. Subject to your questions.
Counselors?
I have one question.
Counselor Hosmer?
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. Um, thank you, Wes. I, I, on page ninety-one, if you happen to have, yes, the expenditure plan. Um, I'm just looking at fiscal year eighteen, nineteen budget and what, what jumps out at me is the salaries in that comparing it to thirteen, fourteen, we go from six nine hundred ninety-three thousand up to just over a million. But when I look at things like how much is being spent on highway maintenance, you know, it's two hundred and thirty-five thousand in thirteen, fourteen and it goes up a mere thirty-five thousand dollars in eighteen or nineteen. So, am I looking at, I mean, it seems like we're spending more on people and less on the actual work. Are, am I reading this incorrectly or missing a piece of that puzzle?
You, what you're spending on is the salaries for the people who do the work. Then you're spending it on the materials that they use to do the work. So it really depends upon what's the cost of the people between colas and raises as they age in the system.
One of the things, if I could just interject, if you look at the, uh, the number for fiscal year fourteen, that was the number that was for regular salaries. And if you look underneath that, you'd have to add up all the other line items such as, um, sick, hurt, holidays, vacations. And when you look at the budgeted line item for fiscal eighteen and fiscal nineteen years, that, that's all combined in there and until they, they take the holidays and take the vacation and take the sick, as that occurs, then it will spread out over those other line items.
So it was itemized before and now it's not?
It's, it, right, it goes in as just one number and then as, as the time is used throughout the year, then it gets booked to the different line items.
Once it gets actua- actualized after the fact, it gets broken down by the line item.
So that number will reduce that, you're saying that salary line will actually reduce and get allocated to different lines there? So it'll break out differently?
So the real salary line item for fiscal year fourteen would be the six ninety-three plus the nineteen thousand and the twenty-eight thousand for vacations and the forty-six thousand for vacations.
Okay.
And the second thing, Counselor, that I'll be touching upon a little later when it comes to my turn is on page eleven is where a lot of the major capital items are. So those are just straight operational expenses, but when you look in the middle of the page, on eleven, down to the DPW heading, you know, you'll see a million three eighty for street repair and you'll see bridge sidewalk work. So you've probably got over two million dollars in additional capital money that shows up there for specific projects that goes hand in hand with the operational budget.
Terrific, thank you very much, thank you, Wes.
Counselor Lutman?
This isn't a big one, but sometimes I like to focus on the smaller ones too. The, um, street lighting, um, budget, uh, you can see the benefit of, uh, converting, um, there going down, running about half in our current budget. But, um, what's the uptick planned for? Is that just the rate for electricity?
When, when we built the budget for seventeen, eighteen, it was a rough estimate. When I built this year's budget even before the, uh, we got all our bills for the year, I went into the tariffs, I did a complete month-by-month calculation based off each light that we had, uh, to get closer to it. And it turned out it was in the hundred and twenty-three thousand range. And then we have some other bills that are, uh, meter-based and we added those to get the figures.
Thank you.
Could you go back to the, uh, the million dollars you mentioned in borrowing in two thousand and twenty and walk me through that again?
The, basically, to do the next phase of Court Street, Fair to Main, we were looking at, uh, another million-dollar bond. That million-dollar bond is about figure a hundred thousand dollars payment a year. That's about what we get out of, or get from the vehicle registrations per year for the municipal highway trust, municipal highway fund based off of that action the city council took earlier in the fiscal, fiscal year.
That was that increase in the fee that went to five dollars from a dollar fifty, so that's tracked separately. Year to date, we just saw the, uh, May financials, we have eighty-seven thousand that's collected separately from what's reported in the motor vehicle registration line item.
Where's that money going now?
Um, it, it is-
Two thousand and twenty?
It's, we're, we're going to save that up for the two years, be able to have two hundred thousand dollars cash on hand, go out and do the bond and then we're comfortable that that annual revenue coming in from the five dollars of vehicle along with a little bit of cash on hand will support that hundred and ten or hundred and fifteen thousand dollar a year bond payment, which will be what's required to do a million-dollar bond for ten years.
So concentrating on simply road repair for the moment, once that bond is obtained, sold, those bonds are sold, I guess would be the proper terminology, what's going to be our total bonded debt service for roads?
For, yeah, once that's sold, you'll have six million dollars in bonds for roads only, that's outstanding.
So if we, so when we started down this road per Counselor Hamel's initiative a year ago to borrow two and a half million twice?
Correct.
That, that, that total now has jumped to six million from five million, is that correct?
Correct.
But there's a new source of funding there that wasn't in place when we made the decision to do the two and a half and two and a half.
So that additional one million doesn't happen?
And that's because we wanted to spend another million or that's because that project is costing a million more than we originally thought?
No. No, that's because at the point where we had the five million, we knew that wasn't enough to do what we wanted to get done on all, on Court Street and Union Street. So part of it was gonna be at some point, either we do another bond or we gradually eat into it using the normal annual road maintenance program.
So at that point, our total annual debt service on road borrowing is gonna be how much annual? Four hundred thousand?
It's gonna be, we, we dropped from a million five down to high seven eighty, your first year on that slide you had, Wes?
Right, that's right. So the, uh, not counting the, the one million dollar bond, which is really coming from another source, this is our best estimate that you see in front of you for, uh, our payments.
So, so when we fully engage the two, two and a half million dollar bonds of the five million, under the first year that they're both in place, the annual payment for that is seven hundred thousand dollars. And then it decreases down to six eighty for six sixty-one.
Wasn't the original plan to take that money out of the, out of the capital expenditure every year for roads?
And that's part of what we're doing this year, so there's a, there's the million?
So if we've been spending a million five on roads in recent years, ballpark, if we spend seven on debt service, that would take that number down to eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right, and that's where we start to do that, you can see that bottom number available of around eight hundred thousand dollars and then it starts to increase by thirty or forty thousand a year. My intent is to try to get more money into that street line item in the capital side. This year with what happened with the county and, and the county going up a significant amount, it was not an available option this year in terms of how I prioritized it. But yes, once we get the second bond in place, that will leave about eight hundred thousand dollars available. With the additional million dollars, as Counselor Lutman pointed out, we've got a designated revenue source for that that we didn't have two years ago.
Yeah, but that designated revenue source could have gone to something else too.
It needs to go to a transportation-related, so it would have to go to streets, sidewalks, bike paths, uh, multipurpose, you know, uh, walking paths type of thing. It has to go to a transportation-related item.
Our, our roads are deplorable, we just have to drive.
Well, I, I mean, I-
And I think the issue is we, we, the two and a half million and the two and a half million was to, to catch up because you, you're, you're so far behind, you never catch up and it ends up deteriorating worse. So, I mean, I think it was either pay me now or pay even more later and so I think the-
But wouldn't it be a fair statement to say though, uh, uh, that, that we didn't catch up? We spent the five million dollars, actually six, on parts of two roads.
But those are hu- those are huge projects there, that if we wouldn't have nothing, if we just did those out of cash, we'd do nothing else in the whole city. I mean, we don't, we spend, we were spending a million and eight-
Dramatize the situation we're in.
Right, I mean, it's, but I think, you know, we've been able to do that and pass the tax cap compliant budget and still, we're gonna spend four million dollars in roads the next two years between, and then we're gonna drop down some, but we're still gonna be spending almost over a million dollars a year. But I mean, I think the issue is, you know, the situation's pretty deplorable and you're never gonna catch up. And, you know, hopefully we'll get to catch some other breaks along the way here, but-
Some of the challenges with both Court Street and Union Ave, um, is they're, they're complete streets and we're treating them as complete streets. We need comprehensive drainage work on them to occur. They've got sidewalks on one and both sides of the street and in a lot of cases, they're a three-lane road because of the turning lane. So when you're talking about the tons and the square footage of asphalt you're using, you're covering a lot more area than just the traditional two-lane road. So they are very expensive streets. If you look back over the last five, six, seven years, uh, between the city and the state, we've done significant work on South Main Street coming into the intersection here at Main. On, on North Main Street, we've done some work and the state has picked up, um, beyond the urban core. Um, we're taking care of Union Ave through Lakeport and coming into the downtown over the next year or two and we're addressing Court Street. So really, the four major entrance points into the city in combination with state and local will have had some very significant work completed on them in the last five or six years.
Let's give, let's give, uh, Counselor Ballance a shot.
So the other issue with the two and a half million is we're, we're spending it, most roads don't last ten years. We're, we're, where we're spending the money on the borrowed is where we have to put in some major planning where the cost and the borrowing match the life. So we're not borrowing ten years on three-year roads, we're borrowing ten years on ten-year investments. So we're trying to match that in terms of the way we spend that two and a half million, which is, I guess, from another financing standpoint, uh, not, not silliness of, you know, borrowing for ten years for something that lasts three.
Counselor Ballance?
So lay it out simple for me, just so I understand. Where's the first two and a half million going? Where's the second two and a half million going? Where's the third billion dollars going?
Okay, the first, uh, let me pull this up so we got it. Okay, so the first two and a half billion is basically Court Street from Fair to, to the Bridge. So we're working Court Street from the intersection of Fair Street going towards Dirkie.
Okay.
Okay, the bridge is before it, but that's general area, okay? That, we're, we, we're still doing some estimates on it because we keep finding environmental issues underneath it. That's in the neighborhood of about one point five mil. Then we're going from there to do Union from Elm Street to Stark Street. We're working the estimates on that now because of the problems associated with the loss of base underneath the road by that retaining wall. That's why you see that real heavy rutting, uh, by the retaining wall that we just sort of, uh, in the worst piece of it, we shimmed over to get it through the summer.
So we got a million left, is that gonna cover it?
That's gonna be about the two point five mil, right there. Between those two, may even tap a little bit into that second two point five million. Then the second two point five million starts us on the Union Avenue project. It goes from Main Street over a hill towards Guilford Avenue. That's still in the early piece of design, we've got some rough estimates for it, but we haven't gotten to the point where we're in tightening that down. There may be a little bit left from that, in which case that would be matched with the one million to go into, uh, Court Street from Fair working back towards Main Street.
Working back towards Main Street.
And then the only piece left on Court Street, uh, will be after the bridge is done, the piece that basically goes from the, the party city store towards Belmont.
So that's not in the six million?
That's not in the six million.
And we did a, a pretty solid maintenance shim on that about two, maybe three years ago and that's holding up fairly well for the time being.
The reason I'm belaboring this is, is because we have, we have three new counselors this year and not, not, not to aim criticism at what we've done or the project or anything like that, it's not my intent. I just want to kind of dramatize for the three new counselors here the dilemmas that we face in this particular area.
I, I guess, you know, respectfully, I don't agree that we face a dilemma. I think we proactively identified an issue, came up with a financing plan that made sense, borrowed at a very favorable rate to match it up with the life of the projects and I think we're in good shape in terms of making progress on our roads versus where we are. It's a similar situation to the lighting. We put some money out front and we're saving money. We took a line item from two hundred and twenty-four thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand, so.
So you would not agree that having to drop down to eight hundred thousand on routine maintenance is not a good thing?
No, I'm, I'm saying that we are able, we're gonna be putting, if you take an average over four years, we're putting four million in, in one year, four million in another and then we're doing maybe two million and then we're, we're putting like over a five-year period, we're averaging well over two and a half million a year, which is almost a million more than what we had been investing. And by the time I think we get to the end of that period, we'll find a way to fill in the rest of that gap. We did, you know, as the manager said, the one thing we didn't have in our plan was the county budget going up quite as much as it did go up. I mean, we were planning for the county budget to go up about four hundred thousand and ended up hitting us close to eight or nine hundred thousand.
What was the, remind me, this might have been before your time, I'm not sure what the number was that we were advised two, three years ago, we would have, the question came up, how much money would we have to spend on an annual basis? Cash, to catch up?
The, as part of the pavement management program, what they briefed here, again, this is only, when they briefed that number, it was only the pavement surface. It didn't include any of the underground, any stormwater drainage or anything. It was just pavement surface. It was about one point three million a year. But whenever you- But, whenever you touch a road surface now, I have to, if it has sidewalks, I got to bring those sidewalks up to current ADA standards, so that's additional cost over it. Additionally, if there's anything bad with the stormwater drainage system, you got to fix it before you spend a million dollars on the road. Otherwise, you're just throwing money away. So, that one point three million, our rough planning factor, again, it varies from road to road, is about thirty percent additional is what you need for the, for the sidewalks and the drainage.
Scott, do you have anything to add to that? Because I think it was, I think it was when, uh, Paul was still here when we discussed this the first time.
Yeah, I think they gave us a, a raw number of if you hit the lottery today and you could invest.
Twenty-five million or something?
Twenty-five million in one fell swoop, if it was possible to do, it could get you there. I think the target was somewhere at that one point six, one point eight million going towards operational, separate from debt service, and then looking to incrementally increase that by, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty, so that over, uh, a period of five or six years, you maybe were up in that two and a half million dollars a year built into the budget. And, and to Councilman Leibman's point, you know, when, when the economy really tanked back in oh, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, we were still challenged with it, you know, the easiest place to find larger chunks of money is in reducing capital. I mean, that, you're going to cut programs and cut a whole bunch of staff, or you're going to find it in capital. And in order to, you know, try to keep the, the taxes affordable for residents during a very challenging period, you know, we did drop down to about eight hundred thousand dollars, I believe at the time, was in the operating budget cash for streets. So since that time, the council has incrementally built that up by that hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to bring it up to that million and a half, and I think last year we got close to a million six. But, a- again, the county kind of curtailed that a little bit, and that was not my desire to be using as much of the operating cash to support the debt service, and knowing from what councilors say and what I hear from residents myself, um, that's a priority of mine in infrastructure, to try to get that number growing faster again in future years. It just was not possible within this budget.
Well, if there's any consolation, uh, we're, we're not in this boat by ourselves, I think we all know that. I had occasion, some of you do this a lot more often than I do, but, uh, Councilor Hamel and I were driving around in Concord within the last month or six weeks or so, one day, in the residential areas of, of, uh, North Concord, and their streets were pretty bad.
And, you know.
And that's the dilemma.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
That's the dilemma.
And just from a what's coming tomorrow perspective, the county budget next year is going to hurt us, or seems like it may hurt us as much as it, as much or more that it did this year, so that you're looking at the same shortfall, um, when we roll into next year's budget. I'm just making that observation.
Okay, any other questions for Wes? Done? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Wes.
Yep, appreciate it, and, uh, so we're going to go to the finance department next, and, uh, Mrs. Woodman, you're, you've got the next two topics, finance and welfare.
Is that me?
It was me.
That was you? Does everybody have their budget books?
What page? What page?
It's all on that sheet, so.
Okay.
Excuse me? Okay, if you can please turn to page twenty-seven, the first, uh, department that we're going to go over is the information technology budget.
What page?
Twenty-seven. And just to give a little history to the new councilors, um, up until the year fiscal sixteen, there was this, the information technology budget was a one line item in the, in the, um, non-departmental section of the budget, and we had some internal changes here with staffing, and we just realized that it was better if we could start to identify and break down, you know, what we're spending on licensing, and what we're spending on equipment, software, internet, web, and the, the website, et cetera. So that's why if you look at this page, you'll see that, uh, prior to fiscal year sixteen, there was just one line item budgeted number for the actual expenses. What this covers is there's two full-time employees, um, in IT, however, their salaries are covered under the finance budget, so this is just IT-related costs to anything that's related to infrastructure and computers, and firewalls, and servers, and licensing upgrades, so that everybody can do their job. Um, this past year, the IT staff has been busy updating the server and connectivity at the library, and we've reestablished, um, a, a good working relationship with them, and looking at ways that they can better serve the clients and, and folks that come in and visit the library. Um, they've also been working with Mainstate Computer, which is our computer consultant, on, um, you know, keeping everything secure, they're working on, um, long-range planning, completing a security assessment, they, uh, test, they sent out some emails of, test emails to see who opened them and who didn't open them, and it was interesting to see the pass fail. So as we go along, they're also going to help us with a business continuity plan, um, with, with the IT staff. They've also were coordinating with the new equipment that you see here, um, in the council chambers, and, um, basically you can see that the budget for this year is a hundred and sixty thousand, and, um, I don't know if you have any questions on that or not.
Any questions on the administration information technology budget?
Well, I guess.
Councilor Ballen?
I, I have a question with respect to consulting, I don't know what that's for, but I know that you requested twenty-five, and the manager locked me in at twenty, so tell me what the consulting stuff is.
That's Mainstate Computing, and anything that we feel, um, they bring in their staff and maybe focus on different areas of our infrastructure here to see where we may have weaknesses, and help identify them, and then create a project list, um, for our staff to, to manage. Most municipalities, um, it's, obviously your larger cities have a staff, but most municipalities of our size don't have a staff, they hire, um, an IT consultant to do all of their, their IT related.
So the consulting is on a fairly regular basis, is it?
We buy, we buy a block of hours per year, and we have specific projects identified, um, that they, so, yes.
It could be something like updating our servers and going to the cloud now, and something that we don't do on an every year basis. We update software, we update, uh, security, we update licenses annually, we troubleshoot, we replace a certain number of computers annually. But if all of a sudden we're updating servers, and we're running a fiber line, we want to use the cloud, that's something we want to bring somebody in to use their expertise and help us create the system that's going to be cost effective, but work for us at the same time.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Anything else on administration, IT?
Um, if you want to turn to page forty-six, we'll talk about employee benefits. And the employee bene- and that's page forty-six. And under employee benefits, we have social security, health insurance, and New Hampshire retirement. The social security and Medicare is covered under these, what's labeled social security line, and that is the social security and Medicare for all departments except for public works and the enterprise fund of internal service fund and sanitary sewer. So, that, it, your police and fire, they just pay Medicare, um, the uniformed folks, but that comes, comes out of the general fund budget as opposed to their own budget, where, and, and that's based upon estimated COLAs and steps have been factored into that. The, uh, health insurance line, once again, covers the estimated cost of health insurance for all general fund departments, which is basically city hall, the library, parks and rec. The public works, fire department, police, solid waste, and the enterprise funds, their health insurance is included in their own budgets. Um, we have factored in the seven point eight seven percent increase that we received from the Hampshire Interlocal Trust, and we base it on our current enrollment, and if there's any vacancies, we try to make some assumptions to, as to what, you know, the enrollment factor may be.
So, if I can, just to follow up on, uh, on Councilor Ballen's last question, when you, sometimes you see in a department request is one number, and then any manager, um, approved or recommended is a different number? In most cases, it's lower, I will admit, not a lot of times am I adding more money to it, but this budget actually starts to get put together in December, in January, and we're using our current census as we know it at that point. A lot of times, we might have some changes in employees here, wages may change, somebody may go from a, a one person to a two-person health insurance, or from a family, a new hire might have a single. So, those numbers get adjusted to reflect and update from what started in December to where we came in April before I presented the budget to you. So it's, it's the most recent number, it's usually just not an arbitrary cut in the, in the case of health insurance, salaries, social security, those are all driven by a percentage of payroll in most cases. So if we know what our current census is, those numbers are driven from that. Items like consulting and stuff, those are, those are.
Something you have more control.
Something that we make, we make priorities, priorities on and prioritize our dollars.
Okay.
Uh, the next item, item is the retirement, and that's the cost of the New Hampshire retirement system for the general fund group one employees, and that's calculated based on their wages at eleven point three eight percent, once again, going back to their estimated, um, what their current rates are, and any estimated COLAs and or steps are calculated into that. And, as mentioned, the fire, police, um, DPW, solid waste, and the enterprise funds, they handle the cost of their own, New Hampshire retirement is built into their budgets.
Any questions on employee benefits?
Just one, how, how many, how many people does this cover?
Well, maybe forty, no, forty, fifty, because it's everybody in this building, and there's about, uh, ten people over at the library, and probably another five or six full-time employees at the park, so I would say.
Subscribers or members?
Members, well, we're talking, if you're talking New Hampshire retirement, you're talking employees.
Right.
Health insurance would not be eligible, or, or part-time employees wouldn't necessarily be eligible for health insurance, so Parks Recreation might hire a lot of seasonal employees, not factoring in, but it's, um, it's, it's assessing, planning, finance, administration, um, you know, the IT, library folks, parks and recreation, full-time people.
And one of the things that I do when I'm calculating or, or estimating these for this is, Parks does have a lot of summertime folks, and I take them out of the equation in terms, because they're not going to earn New Hampshire retirement system.
Right, okay.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Forty-eight.
Page forty-eight. He's already there. This is the overall budget for the finance department, which includes mostly salaries for ten full-time employees and a part-time treasurer. Full-time employees include the personnel, purchasing, assistant finance director, a payroll assistant, payroll personnel assistant, tax collector, finance clerk, tax clerk, two full IT staff and myself. Um, the lar- two largest expense lines, um, in the other category are postage and audit, and this is, that postage line includes the amount of mailing the tax bills twice a year, as well as we have to, uh, send out certified letter when, for delinquent taxes, as well as our AP, our weekly AP, um, invoices that we send, our payments that we send out. The way everything works here is when mail comes up to the finance department, we know what department it's coming to, and it gets charged back to their department, so, um, but the majority of our costs for postage are mailing out the tax bills, which is about ten thousand bills each, twice a year, in addition to the, uh, certified letters for tax dealing and delinquent taxes. And, um, the audit, well, it's pretty self-explanatory, and we get the bill, we split it between the school and ourselves, and, um, you know, that's pretty, that's about it. I mean, if you notice, it was, um, just a slight increase over last year, and I think we've got, this is our last year on this contract, so we'll send it out for another RFP, um, for next year, I believe. Any questions?
And just another point of reference, you can turn to page forty-nine, and that'll give you all of the details of the employees that are covered in the finance budget. And we do that on the back of the primary page, so if you want to look at Parks and Recreation, you can see how many full-time employees, what's in there for seasonal, you can see the library employees that are all covered in the breakdown as to the positions and what their annual salaries are.
We did have two staffing changes this past year, um, we had a reclassification we, of our payroll, the person that was doing payroll was originally a union employee and, um, was called an account clerk, finance clerk, and when, um, we had a, somebody, leaving somebody else came in, we got that taken out of the union because we felt that because of the sensitivity of the data that this person is exposed to, that it, it, um, probably shouldn't be a union position, and at that time, we also reclassified it a little bit because it is a fairly complex, our payroll here is not easy, and we're probably one of the larger employers that still do weekly payroll in-house, um, with over a hundred and fifty employees on a regular week, and then when you bounce up with summer staff, we've got motorcycle week, um, then you get elections, it can easily top two hundred, and it's done every single week.
Why, why haven't we gone to every other week?
Good question. I don't know if that would make it easier or more difficult, because particularly the fire and police is very intense, but, um, in terms of the, the time on, time off, and details, and, um, I, we, I don't know if the unions would allow it.
We've certainly got to engage the unions, we will have some preliminary conversations. It is, uh, a city that runs on some departments twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, there are shift differential, there's overtime, um, there's vacation pay when folks are working, I mean, I'm sorry, there's holiday day pay on times when folks are working, there's holiday pay when the employee truly gets the day off, there are a number of different components to it. Um, it's a very time, uh, it's a very challenging payroll. We did recently implement, um, electronic time clocks within the last two or three years, which was not the case until that point, everything was still, um, written manually, reviewed by a supervisor, double approval by a senior manager, and then entered again. So we've gotten to an ADP system where it's logging in, we're able to track, uh, calendars of scheduled time off, we're able to track how many hours people have electronically, we've come a long way in the last couple of years. Could the next step be to go, try to go, uh, to a bi-weekly? Absolutely, uh, but we're just not there yet.
Thank you.
We, we sign all of the checks here, the treasurer signs all the checks for the whole city, including the waterworks and the school, uh, as well as the city, so it's quite a coordination effort, the, whoops, the, uh, the school pays every other week, or, or, I think it's every other week, or, but, I'm not sure if it's twice a month, but, so, we've kind of got it down to a system of when our treasurer comes in, she handles, um, all the investments for both the waterworks and the city in terms of when we have money, um, from taxes and so forth, so, and she's local, so if we have an issue and we need her to sign a check, we can process it and bring it over to her, and, and get it taken care of.
So the treasurer position in the city is a part-time position, it's not a full-time position?
It's part-time position, and she's in here at least twice a week, if not more than that, doing and getting rates and moving money around and so forth, and so, um, we're very grateful for that, that she's that accessible, and, and has been, she's been doing it now for, well, since Mr. Holbrook left.
We tell her that she can't retire.
Tell her that, so, does anybody have any questions, or?
I guess my take on.
Finance department budget.
Go ahead.
Councilor Ballen?
Yeah, I had, I just had a comment, um, are you moving on, or do you have a question?
I'm sorry?
Are you moving on, or do you have a question?
No, I'm recognizing someone who wants to answer a question or make a comment on the finance department budget.
My comment is, just following up on, uh, Counselor Hosman's observations, I take it that a bi-weekly, um, schedule is being pursued in some manner, and would that really result in a cost reduction?
We've had the conversations about it, um, yes, it probably would save some time. We do have a fair number of employees who are paycheck to paycheck, um, and I believe we would have to get buy-in from the unions, um, based on what we currently have as our city's current pay policy and stuff, um, to go forward and make the wholesale changes. So, um, I don't want to say yes, it's something that I know we can accomplish in the next year, but we are having those conversations.
Okay. Anything else on the finance department budget?
If you want to turn to page fifty-two, we can talk about the insurance piece. And, under this category, we have unemployment, workers comp, property. And under this category, we have unemployment, workers' comp, property and liability, and the two other small categories for wellness, safety, training, and claims. We've been fairly fortunate that our unemployment rate has gone down a little bit, so that's why you see a slight reduction there. The workers' comp is the workers' compensation for all city departments, including fire, police, public works. The enterprise funds of Internal Service Fund and Sanitary Sewer Fund, and also the ambulance workers' comp is not included in this line item. It is included in their individual budgets. And it's based upon estimated billing and any audit. We fill out an audit at the end of the year. We have noticed a slight reduction in some of our rates in that area as well.
Workers' comps rates here are clerical workers?
It's everybody. It's police, it's fire, it's...
Oh, it's everybody?
Yes.
Why such... It seems to be kind of unpredictable going back a few years, ninety-five thousand on the workers' comp insurance.
We had a premium holiday.
Okay.
So the actual that came in, we ended up getting a premium holiday from a discount for...
So we're part of New Hampshire Interlocal Trust, which is a relatively new group for the Harvard Pilgrim Product with Health Insurance, where with Primex for our property liability and our workers' comp.
Correct.
And they both fall under a state statute of their five B entities. They're risk pools that are put together for the benefit of their members, which are municipals, municipalities, school districts, in some cases, counties. So they self-insure collectively for many, in the case of health insurance, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of value, and the property liability is a smaller number. But they're self-insured and pay out those claims. So you, as an individual member, part of your rate is driven by your claims history, and part of it is by the performance of the pool. If the pool collectively has positive years where the amount that's paid out is less than the estimate, there's a certain level that you want to keep, these risk pools would keep, for an appropriate level of reserves to operate and catch up on anything unforeseen that may come, a catastrophe in the health industry. It could be, you know, an influenza that takes over or something unforeseen. But once you've adequately funded your reserves, you would return the rest as surplus. So sometimes you get a surplus back. You get it in the terms of a premium holiday. So sometimes you'll see the actual number at ninety-five or a hundred, but there was a reason for that that we knew going into it. So...
Fewer claims and better performance of the risk fund.
Right. In most cases, we still budgeted for the anticipated amount and knowing that we had because of all of a sudden we said, hey, we're going to get a hundred thousand dollars back this year. We're in a two hundred thousand dollar normal annual bill, and we cut the budget by a hundred grand. The next thing you're doing the following year is having to find the new hundred thousand dollars to get back in the budget. So in most of those cases, we've come to the council and said, you know, here's some recommendations. Can we move it into a stabilization account? Can we move it into an accrued leave account for time off that's due employees on the books that we aren't necessarily funding through a budgetary process? But we're kind of taking these one-time available funds and putting them into a reserve for those reasons.
Thank you.
Also included in this is the property and liability. And once again, this costs the cover of all the property and public officials' liability insurance. We've recently updated all of our values. The cost of the Sanitary Sewer Fund and the Internal Service Fund net assets are booked to those enterprise funds and are not included in here. We build the waterworks that they get combined on our bill as well, and we bill them out for that so that we just... It's just the city's cost for that property and liability.
How often do we shop that? Property and liability.
There's really only one... There's one risk pool entity, and that's Primex at the state. There was a second one through Property Liability Trust that, through some challenges with the Secretary of State's office a few years back, is no longer a business. There is one other firm, I believe they're out of Concord, that's a private carrier that has started to come into this field, and they're getting some clients. Sometimes our concern is in reviewing it is some of the gap coverage that you don't necessarily stop and think about. And I can hear some of the folks at Primex, you know, we talk about having your summer carnival or whatever. Bouncy houses are something they would prefer to have go away. All right? So sometimes with the new carrier, some of these gaps are there, and you leave yourself with some unanticipated exposure. So I guess there are at least two players, but there is one that dominates and is much more proactive with training and coming out and doing site assessments, that work with you on your playgrounds, you know, look to work with you to avoid some of the workers' comps or the litigation-type issues for something unforeseen happening. And then they bring a great value to not only Laconia, but cities and schools across the state.
Any other questions?
Questions on insurance? Okay, reimbursables?
Actually, if you want to turn to page fifty-four, are you going to talk about this?
So yours?
This is just the list of the principal and interest for the next year. And this page includes all of the city, all the bonds that the city currently has. However, the only one that's included in the city budget is the one at the top of the page. The school includes their bonds on their side in their budget, and then Water keeps theirs and presents it in their budget. This one point eight million does include the anticipation of going out and bonding another two and a half million dollars some way midway through the year, so that we've included an estimate of thirty-four thousand and change just for the partial year interest for that.
The school number doesn't include their reimbursement from...
It does not.
From the state?
State aid, no. And for the new councils, if you do look at the school bonds, there's quite a few bonds.
Does it include that on this page, or just in general?
It has it itemized here, but it's not included. It's included on the school side of the budget. I've given them that number.
So on any of the building aid, what the school carries on their books is just the amount they're responsible for. So if they had constructed something and there was a sixty percent reimbursement coming annually from the state, they're only showing on the books the net of that, of what they're responsible for and what the impact is.
So where would we find that? What is reimbursable by the state?
We would get that detail from the school and the school budget. I don't have it in front of me, but hopefully we would have that.
It'd be good to maybe provide the councils that amortization schedule that has it all.
I have a schedule of that. That gives you an estimate of what each one of these... Because some of the... Each percentage varies. So I can certainly put that in a schedule.
You've really got to look at it for about five years running. Like, you pull it out five times a year, and you look at it for five years. By the time of the fifth year, then it kicks in.
It's really not that.
But some of the...
We'll get copies and go through them.
Some of these budgets on the...
Well, I'm so glad, because I don't understand it all.
On the QZFs, we're interest-free, so that's why you notice on the school, there's three loans there that do not have any interest that is payable.
Yeah.
And just one thing that I'll point out to you up on the upper part of the municipal bonds. Down at the very bottom of that list, just above where it says total city, you can see that's the two and a half million street sidewalk drainage improvement bond that Wes just spoke of. When we issue the bonds partway through the year, typically, it's only a half-year's worth of interest that's built into the budget. So for this year to issue that bond, then we get the use of those dollars for the next fiscal year, is costing us a little over thirty-four thousand dollars. If you go up two lines to the two thousand eighteen General Street Sidewalk Drainage Improvement Bond, that was the first two and a half million dollar bond. So in the budget a year ago, that one probably had a similar number just for a half-year's worth of interest. You could see in order to get the full value of principal and interest into this budget, the total is three hundred and seven thousand dollars. So I already know that next year, there's another two hundred and sixty or seventy thousand dollars that I need to find in order to put the full payment schedule for that bond into the budget. Now, at the same time, in the far-right column, you can see bonds going back to two thousand and one. One of the middle columns tells you how many years remaining until that's paid off. But typically, we're running anywhere from two to four percent decline on all of those schedules. So some money is falling off this year, which helps add a new bond onto it. It doesn't make it a complete wash, but our amortization schedule on the city side is for declining principal and interest on all of our bond issuances.
What was the old magic number, three-two? Three point...
Three point two?
Yeah, three point two million, yeah. Net. That was including the value of the school building.
School building aid, yeah.
We stopped counting it like that.
And then we started looking at just reasonable inflation growth to it, because to say for, you know, over a twenty-year period...
I was going to hold you to it. I was just trying to remember. I think it was three-two, right? We're actually, as a percent of budget, I think our, based on the last financial report, we're spending less today than we were in two thousand eight as a percent of our solvency budget.
I think when the audit was presented, our per capita debt, the amount we're spending now versus years ago as a percent of budget, were very healthy.
Talking about here is back when the tax cap was first enacted. Counselor Lippman can answer this a lot better than I can, because he was actually at this table then. But there was a decision made by the council to try to cap, if you will, the amount of principal and interest payments every year spent by the city at three point two million dollars. And that was a net number, right?
Yeah. So what we did is we said rather than treat the school debt service and the city debt service as two different things since the assets belong to the city, right, as a whole? We combined the debt service, and the way it fit together is that school debt needed to come up while the city debt was going down, and then it will reverse, so it kind of stays at a pretty level comfortable situation for us. So it's worked out pretty well.
So what's that number now, then? This isn't four point four, because that's not net, right? Or is it?
Yeah, the four point four, a piece of that, I think the... Up on the municipal side, the Anthony Drive Drainage Improvements, that was paid through an ERA fund account, so that we back out of it. I believe we could go up even higher to two thousand and nine. The transfer station debt is paid for by that first five-dollar fee coming in to the transfer station. So it is the... You know, it is that four point four backed out of a few of those types of things. So we can net it out and give you a firm number today, but I think it's going to be above the, you know, the three point two we were at six years ago.
The other thing is the school numbers in here are in gross.
The school numbers are in gross, so we would have to back that out to get you the actual.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's still in the three threes. It's three.
I mean, I still think we're very reasonable, and we certainly have not, you know, gone on the credit card spending spree and trying to borrow now and figure out how to pay for it over the next ten or twenty years.
Okay, next, please turn to page fifty-five, which is the reimbursable page. And what this is, is the police reimbursables are... If you look at the police budget, there's no budgeted number for extra duty, and that covers the cost of their police details. So when the revenue comes in, this is what we estimate the reimbursables to be, and it offsets the costs. When, if you look at the police budget, you see at the bottom of their budget, there's a line that we plug in there for the reimbursable portion of what they receive for the police detail. And it's the same, and that's for police details, training fees, and transport fees, but the majority of it is the police details that they do.
So why isn't that just in the police budget?
Because it's a revenue.
We have the revenue to come in to offset that, and that's not scheduled into the regular work week. And a lot of that depends on how much construction, roadwork, utility crews might be in town. So we set it up as a standalone where the city's not really making money on it per se, but as a detail is requested for whatever reason, it covers the cost of employee at the detail rate, the retirement system cost. If a cruiser is involved, there's a rate that they do that covers the city's cost for going on the details. And since the number fluctuates greatly, and we think it's money coming in that offsets an expense going out, it really comes in, for the most part, neutral to the city, doesn't have an impact on the general fund, so we track it that way.
If you look at page eighty-three, you'll see that the actual extra duty cost for police, extra duty fiscal year seventeen was a hundred and thirty-four thousand. And if you look below the next line up from the bottom, you'll see a credit of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and that's what we received in income for the various police details that we did.
Where are... Eighty-three?
Page eighty-three. If you look for the extra duty, which is the fourth line down on fiscal year seventeen, you'll see it was a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars that it cost us. And if you look at the bottom, the next second line up from the bottom where it says police reimbursable, we actually billed out a hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
There could be a little bit of soft cost in there that's not included in the wage lines. If we had a cruiser and we burned some fuel and those types of things would show up.
What about retirement?
They get a flat fee, and it depends, I believe, on when they started, whether or not there's retirement paid on that. Once again, it goes back to the payroll thing, and if they started after July one, two thousand and eleven, you may or may not qualify for certain special duties with retirement.
Sorry, I asked this question.
Yeah.
The hourly rate would include, our worst-case scenario, somebody who is allowed to have this paid detail be counted towards their retirement. So we bill it out, not on who the actual person is. We kind of say, here's the rate. We factor the retirement system in. It may be a new hire who, in that case, isn't getting credit under the changes to state law for this to be counted towards a retirement pension calculation, but we're still billing one flat rate under kind of our worst-case scenario. So that could explain why.
Trying to average it out, kind of thing, in terms of what the rate is.
It's sixty-five dollars an hour, Monday through Saturday, for a police officer, and it's ninety-five dollars an hour on a Sunday. And we look at those rates every year to make sure we're covering our costs. And then there's an additional fee if you want, if you need a cruiser, twenty-five dollars for the first four hours, and then twenty-five dollars an hour after that.
Wow, you went Trivial Pursuit today.
And those are typically not our frontline cruisers. They're sitting there idling, just with the lights going in. The frontline cruisers are out with the patrolmen and women on duty.
Okay.
You ready to move on to welfare, or does anybody have any questions? Welfare is on page one twenty-two. And there are two full-time employees that reside in the welfare department. We have a welfare tech one, and we have an administrative secretary, although the administrative secretary does intake and is learning the process in the event that the welfare tech one is not there and is able to at least process a client if it becomes necessary. The largest expense above salaries is the city relief line, which is budgeted at sixty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year nineteen. These welfare staff provide assistance to clients using a voucher system. Nothing is paid out in cash. Everything is through a voucher system. And anybody that comes in seeking assistance needs to fill out an application and report everybody that's living... And I use that term loosely, because if they're homeless, obviously, who, you know, who their family members are, and they have to report what their income and expenses are, if they receive any type of assistance from whether it's SSDI or food stamps. And then we make an assessment, and if they're living in an apartment, you know, we'll look at what our guidelines. If they're paying twelve hundred dollars a month, and there's so many members in their family, we'll look at what the guidelines, which are published by the state, and say, well, you know, we only allow nine hundred, let's say, for that type, for, you know, a two-bedroom apartment. And we'll offer them suggestions and maybe ways to try to decrease what the costs are. And we don't look to assist for delinquent background. We only do current month. Our biggest requests are for housing and utilities, as well as burial has become quite an issue. We've probably have two or three a month that come in looking for burial assistance.
What does that cost per?
Well, we try to work with Wilkinson Bean on that, and we first will look to find out if the person that passed away had any kind of resources. Maybe they're getting their last social security. Hopefully, the family can put in something, but we do work with Wilkinson Bean on a pretty close... You know, trying to work something out here. They do give us a discount, and it's not always the same. But we do try to, you know, soften the blow, but we end up assisting between five hundred and a thousand, but we try to stay at the five hundred mark if we can. It costs more than that, but that's kind of the amount that we try to lock in at, that we'll provide for assistance.
And how many of you are in that category, ballpark?
I don't have a number, but I'd say it's probably maybe thirty. I just looked at... I think we had three last month. Right now, we're... Um, right now, uh, we're, um, we've assisted, as of the end of May, two hundred and forty-six clients, and that's from July one until the end of May of this year, and that's about eighteen percent of an increase over what we did last year, and approximately thirty percent higher in what we actually paid out this year compared to last year. Um, there has, you know, kind of goes ebbs and tides, and, um, we have had a change in staff in there that may contribute to it a little bit. Um, I think we've worked hard to try to change the face of our welfare department. Um, it's, it is difficult because it's not supposed to be a lifestyle, it's just supposed to be for emergency assistance. Um, but we, we have a steady flow of people, I mean, you know.
The number of people Donna just mentioned that we assisted, that's an actual assistance, there's been a lot larger number than that, that we actually try to refer, those things that the city is not responsible for, or is, is not, we don't have the resources available to us, that we do a number of references to maybe its state agencies or other social service agencies, so the number who we actually assist is small compared to the number of actual people who come through the welfare department and fill out some sort of application and we work with.
We do try to offer them other options, connect with them with, sometimes it's easier to try to work with getting, say, the security deposit from CAP and getting somebody into an apartment if they do have a source of income than to, say, put them up in, in a, a shelter. I mean, it's seventy dollars a week at the carry house, it's thirty dollars a night at the Bellnapp House for up to four people, and then there's an additional charge, and to put them at the landmark, it's about seventy dollars a night, so.
Do we still use the landmark?
Very infrequently. Um, a lot of the clients that come here have been banned, so that's not an option.
[laughing]
Even if they want it. We do have people that come in and ask us if they, we can put them up where there's a pool.
We are required to find a shelter for someone, um, it doesn't have to be in Laconia if there's not a shelter available to that, but we do have to make the effort, and if we can't locate one, then we do need to go to, you know, kind of the last resort. Um, in, in a lot of cases, shelters do fill up, um, more so in the wintertime, probably for obvious reasons. Um, we run into a lot of cases where someone will find someone a room and they'll say, well, I don't want to go there. Unfortunately, or fortunately, that's where our responsibility ends, we've located, there could be a, a couple, non-related, no children involved maybe, who we find in places in separate shelters.
And a lot of times, they, yeah, they refuse.
They refuse because they need to go somewhere together, and that sometimes lead to the request of, why can't you put me up at a hotel where we can be together? And our responsibility is to find you a safe shelter, not necessarily together. Certainly if there's children involved in that type of stuff, it brings it to a, to a different, uh, a different level, but, um, it's, it's some challenging cases, and I want to say that over the last year, I'm very pleased with where our staff in there has gone and, um, has tried to go the extra yard and actually hosted a, um, a regional meeting with a number of state and social service agencies here where we had.
Last fall.
Twenty-something.
Yep.
Different providers, if you will, uh, here at, at, at this department's initiative to try to come in and talk about what it is you do and what resources you have available, and how do you best connect with me, and, and to make it more cohesive. Um, it was very positive, and that's something that we're looking to continue to do at that level of communication.
Is the, um, spike over last year, is that something that's unique to Laconia, or do you know?
I, I don't know specifically, I, it could be, um, just more people are, are coming to this area, and, and it, it's amazing, people, you'll say, well, where are you from? And they'll say, you know, Denver, and you'll say, well, why are you here? Do you have family, do you have friends? No, I just thought it was gonna be a good place to come and live, and I, it makes no sense sometimes, you would think people would gravitate towards someplace where they knew somebody or had, or they'll come here to be with family or a friend, and then they get here and they, you know, they, they're not.
Things go south.
Yeah, so.
So you don't make any, well, other communities don't make any kind of cohesive effort to say, look, this is why this is happening, it's not only happening here, it's happening in Belmont. I'm not suggesting you do that, I'm just, you know, I'm just.
I, I think, to be honest, I think it's, it's probably the same everywhere, um, there seems to be a, more of an increased need. Um, and right now, particularly in May, because the elect, the EverSource has the program from mid-October to mid-April, I believe, where you only have to pay a certain percentage of your electric bill, and then, um, like, it, it goes up in May, so you could have a lot more electric shut-offs because of that. The grace period is over, and now you gotta maybe pay the full amount that's due for the month, um, kind of, what I want to say, it kind of pushes off the inevitable, um, you know, people come in and, and, you know, they're evicted. Well, unfortunately, you just didn't wake up this morning and find out you were evicted, there's a process there. And if you come to us soon enough, we can hard, try to work things out with you or your landlord, we have a very good relationship with a lot of landlords in the, in the city, and, um, oftentimes, if people come to us soon enough, we can get, help them to get a, a resolution so they don't end up being homeless. But, you know, obviously, a lot of people feel in that situation, they're, if I ignore it long enough, maybe it will go away, and that's not usually the case.
Yeah, usually they know how they got evicted, it's just they don't do anything about it.
Right.
Until, hey, wait a minute.
And the, the other problem, the other problem we have is if somebody gets some, there's a list of landlords, and if somebody leaves a place or is asked to leave because they didn't pay their rent, or they damaged the place, they all talk. And it's very hard to find those types of, those people, other places to live within Laconia, they have to go elsewhere, because if, if you went and stayed at, you know, this person's apartment and you, you destroyed it and they had made you leave, nobody else, they, they all share information. And, you know, it makes it very difficult.
Any other questions on the welfare budget? Okay, is that, are we to administration now?
We are. I'll be Craig Kimbrel coming in in the ninth inning for you here.
We're in extra innings, remember?
We're in extra innings, all right. So we'll move along relatively quickly, I'm gonna start you back towards the front of the budget book, and then we're gonna close on the capital items at the end. So let's start on page seven, if you would, which is the administration budget, also known as my budget, city manager's budget. This has.
Reduce your own, that's a big question.
Let's reduce that one. [laughing] We have two full-time people, myself, and as you all know, my administrative assistant, Nancy Brown, we also have salaries in here for the mayor and council, and then the cost of operating my office with telephone postage, copiers, the usual. Um, we have the dues in here for the New Hampshire Municipal Association, which I know Dean Trefethan spoke of, uh, last week, and some of the training that we're able to do and some of the benefit. You've heard me report on some items with the legislative efforts and keeping municipalities informed of, of issues that are before the legislature that impact us, sometimes positively and shockingly, sometimes negatively, that we need to go down there and stay on top of, so, um, I believe that's money well spent, and full disclosure, I believe, as you all know, I do cer, currently serve as a board member on the New Hampshire Municipal Association. Uh, there's some conference dues that are provided for me through New Hampshire Managers, as well as the International City Managers Association. We keep a small amount of money in there for some emergency and some economic development expense should something come up that we need to try and participate in, but, uh, a relatively bare-bones budget there. And barring any questions, I will ask you to turn to page.
Questions on the administration budget?
Twenty-one.
Other than the exceptionally low pay for counselors in the area.
So there's a few other components of, of administration budget, um, and these titles far predated me, so they are what they are, but we have some contractual obligations on page twenty-one, some deal with, um, union education reimbursement, we have some longevity awards that are, um, recognizing long-term employees at our holiday luncheon in December for various benchmarks of service. Um, we have also in there, you'll see the contingency line item, that is basically funded at seventy-five thousand dollars plus what we are anticipating, um, to be the net proceeds of sale from the, um, the building to Irwin when that closes, so that's just a parking place for that sale money that we know will happen in the next fiscal year to then the council to re-allocate as it sees fit. Um, I do know that through conversations that the prior council had, um, there, there was a promise made to put some money into the teachers' education, um, reserve account in conjunction with the, um, contract that was approved for the teachers last year, so that's where those targeted funds were slated to go before anybody had any grand ideas on what they were gonna do with a half a million dollars of one-time money. Uh, so hate to be the, the buzzkill there. Um, we have, um, some money in there that we pay to the waterworks to help maintain hydrogen services, we have a contribution that goes to the Motorcycle Week Consortium, and the bottom line item there is, you'll see, our share for the Lakes Region Public Access, um, channels, and we're actually, um, the number budgeted last year was actually too low, the, the actual number came in around thirty-one thousand. This year, uh, our number is at twenty, at that twenty-seven, one-five-seven, and that's actually based on the number of, um, subscribers, cable television subscribers in the city, and that's how LRPA is formulating their budget and assessing that amount, and we've seen a significant decrease in the number of people who are buying cable services, going to some of the online streaming services, or the Dish, or other things available to them, so.
I bet Charlie doesn't know he's a consortium.
Consortium of two over there. Uh, so that's a quick overview of non-departmental, and I can answer questions, or move you on one page to page twenty-three. Page twenty-three are requests that we receive from, um, in a lot of cases, nonprofit or similar type of entities, and some of them might be city committees, um, some of them might be, um, membership-driven committees in the case of a chamber, or the Lakes Region Tourism Association. So these are requests that, um, we, especially with the, the nonprofits and the social agencies, have a form that's filled out where they identify what their overall budget is, what their funding sources are, how many Laconia residents, you know, they may serve, and that might be in the case of entities like, um, New Beginnings, or, um, the Lakes, uh, I'm sorry, what's the one, the Senior Center, or CAP, or some of those in there, they identify a number of, uh, Laconia residents served in conjunction with the overall population served, so you can see that tally is up to this year, um, the numbers that I've chosen to fund are at two hundred and thirty-five thousand, um, the requests came in a little bit over that, about four thousand over that, um, so that number's up about seven thousand dollars from where it was a year ago. Um, and again, if at any time any counselors want to see the background on the individual organizations and their budget and funding sources, all of that information comes in through the finance department, and we have it on file.
I do recall vividly that past councils many years ago spent on a Saturday morning, was that before your time?
Thankfully, it was.
Saturday morning when all these agencies came in here one after another and asked for money and took forever. In recent years, we've not spent two minutes on this budget, I don't think.
So you can see the background on, on the, you know, starting on page twenty-four of the individual organizations, and just to brief, a couple of lines of, of what they do and who they serve in our community.
These, these are items that in small-town New Hampshire typically are like lightning rods every year, but we have not had that issue in recent years, anyway.
All right, we'll move you on to the legal budget, which begins on page sixty-nine, sixty-eight, sixty-nine has the detail. So the city retains the services of Mitchell Municipal, um, law firm for our legal entity, and they're very convenient, right across the parking lot from us, so we break it down into a couple of, um, line items. Um, we have the retainer, which is the second lineup from the bottom, and that's the monthly fee that we review every year with, with Mitchell, on the number of calls that come from departments for more routine questions, asking about an RSA, asking to help draft a resolution or wording on something, asking for clarification. Uh, we have two other items, uh, up there, litigation, right above the retainer, is, is kind of a moving target some years, some years, you know, very favorable, we don't have a lot of, uh, litigation need, other years, just by things that sometimes we cause, and sometimes by things that are out of our control, um, we do have a need for litigation, so that's, um, you know, that has the opportunity to, to spike on you on any given year. And then we do have a line item for special outside litigation if we have something coming into an area of, you know, labor law or something, environmental law type of thing that we need to go out and retain services there. We are very lean with our legal budget, um, we even used to have a, a significant line item in there for a negotiator to help out with, um, all of our labor negotiations, and I started undertaking that a couple of years ago, so you can see, you know, back in thirteen, fourteen, our actual was around sixteen thousand, and this year we budgeted only five thousand, and that's basically, once we work through some of the collective bargaining process, we will have legal counsel just review language and make sure that what we think it says, it actually says, and it says it clearly, so that it's not subject to a challenge or different interpretation or grievance somewhere down the line, so we think at that level it's, um, it's money well spent. We do our general code update now with a company that updates everything for us very efficiently and updates it online, so any, any, uh, overall city code changes happen there for a very reasonable, uh, price on the update. And that's, uh, that's legal in a snapshot.
Any questions on the legal budget?
Why are we paying thirty-five hundred dollars more than requested for the retainer?
Uh, I think that was probably a situation where we had plugged in a prior year number as a holding place, and as we kind of tallied it, uh, in January as to what the cost was, and I believe Mitchell probably went up a little bit on their, on their hourly rate for their attorneys, and based on the hours that we use on an average month, I think it was a combination of those two. So we kind of, we kind of take a look back every twelve months and figure out, you know, did, did we overuse it, or did we underuse it, and do we kind of carry a do-to, do-from? That's kind of been the, the working relationship, but I think they had some, um, costs that needed to pass on, and, um, I think it's been, you know, you can go back to, um, you know, fiscal year fourteen, we were at forty-two thousand dollars, and this year we're budgeting forty-one thousand dollars, so it's.
So this was, this was, would be fair to say this was part of a negotiation that you, that you had with Mitchell.
Yes, they, they tally and share, and we have a discussion about, we kind of do a, a two or three-year period, we don't just necessarily say, oh, you know, you used it a lot this year, let's raise the rates, we talk about it and say, well, let's just kind of make a note of this, and we'll look at it in future year, type of thing, but, um, again, you go back five, six years, and we're actually budgeting less than we were at that point. All right, we will move on to the records page, which is commonly known as the city clerk's budget, and, um, the city clerk does report directly to me, and this budget falls under administration. Seeing we had a new clerk, I was gonna.
Page?
Uh, one oh-three. Seeing we had a new clerk, I was gonna throw her to the wolves and make her defend her own budget this year, but I gave her a mulligan the first year and didn't want her to cry tonight, so.
[laughing]
She's doing a great job in her new role. Um, so similar to other budgets, you can see the, the salary line items at the top, you can see the exact positions that we have over on page one oh-four, you can see the number of things that the clerk's office does, predominantly motor vehicle registrations, but also marriage licenses, vital records, uh, they take care of the dogs, the dump stickers, and all kinds of additional stuff. Uh, the clerk is the clerk for the council, helping put the agendas together, um, along with, with Nancy, although Cheryl does the, the predominant amount of the work on that, keeping the minutes, um, spending her Monday evenings with us. Um, and then she certainly oversees the elections process as well, the elections I'll get to in a minute on a different page, but really no significant, um, changes here, any of the changes you see in the salaries are based on newer people to the position and kind of some backfilling as we, um, hired some new people over the course of the past twelve months or so, and then you can just see the operational expenses, a lot of that is just done with, um, funds that we need to license dogs, to work with the state motor vehicle registration system, with the software and the forms there, and, and that type of stuff, so, um, you know, you actually see an overall decrease in the clerk's budget by about fourteen thousand dollars from last year. And we remind people that they can do a lot of their stuff online, because we can always predict that on this past Friday, you know, the day, one day after a new month starts, anybody who failed to register their car in May was here on Friday, June first, because otherwise they were without a valid registration for a two-day weekend, and you, you know when the people are gonna. And you know when the people are going to show up. But we tell people that there's a lot of stuff that you can do online these days, and with credit cards. And not that we don't enjoy seeing their smiling faces here, but it might help them out, especially if they've got tight schedules. All right, we'll turn to page one-hundred-and-seven. This is also part of a clerk's budget on the elections. So as you all know, we do have six wards. We have election workers in a variety of positions who assist us greatly in running our elections. On any given year, we budget toward the number of elections that we think we're going to have. In this past, actually this current fiscal year, right, we picked up two additional special state elections that were unplanned for. And in one of the state elections, it called for the primary in addition to the general election. So we actually had three additional elections. I forget the turnout for the primary, but it was around a hundred people, a hundred-and-twenty people that covered all six wards had to be open. So not only is it one poll in place, it's six wards. So this is just election workers in six wards, times the number of elections that we believe we're going to have in any given year. This year, coming up, we're looking at two elections. The state primary in September, and then the state and general election in November, are the two that we're planning for at this point.
Ward four expenses just gotten out of hand.
It's out of control.
We ought to look into that situation.
Yeah, I think so.
And as I already mentioned, we, because of those special elections, we did blow through the election budget as it was presented last year. So we'll be making some adjustments as we close out this fiscal year because of those three additional elections. All right, and then the last page I'll bring you to, that I'll go into a little bit of detail, is the capital page, for all the capital items. And we'll go back to page eleven on that one. So on page eleven, this is the capital budget that is cash within the operating budget of the general fund. This does not include any of the sewer or the water projects which are contained within their budgets. To the right of the very bold black line down the middle there is what's proposed for fiscal year nineteen. To the left of it was what was adopted in fiscal year eighteen. So we break it down by departments. So you can see parks, facilities, fire, police. The non-capital reserve account is an account that was set up years ago that typically we try to fund some dollars toward for unanticipated smaller capital needs that come up during the year. It could be a situation with a roof that needs repairs that wasn't planned for. It could be an HVAC system, or an elevator in a building that we didn't know was going to fail, and we need to find some, you know, funds, somewhat significant funds, twenty, thirty thousand dollars that aren't available elsewhere in the budget. And then you can see the DPW one. So you can see the department requests. Everything that came through the capital improvements program process is listed there, no matter where it rated. So you can see where the CI committee, CIP committee ranked all those projects. And again, water and sewer go through that process, and they're included in the budget. So you see some gaps, and you might say, well, why don't I see a ranking of number nine, or whatever, in there? Because it might have been a water and sewer project. So of all the CIP rankings, maintain and repair city streets ranked the highest among the committee as a priority and where we need to be at. And the request was for the one-point-six million. If you go over to where we were last year, the approved amount was a million four-eighty-four, and we're about a hundred thousand dollars less than that this year. My desire was to increase the amount above last year's level. Through a lot of challenges, it did not happen. So you can also see that there are a number of little dashes, and there were a number of these projects did not have available funding. And you can look at it and say, are they wants? Are they needs? What might be a need to somebody, might be a want to somebody else? We try to keep a healthy amount of capital cash in the operating budget as a percent of the overall city expenditures, so that we are taking care of buildings, roads, bridges, other infrastructure, because it's one of those things, you can pay me now, or you can try to defer it, and you're going to pay a whole lot more later. So that's the breakdown. What we do typically every year as well is, if there are funds that are not expended by the end of the fiscal year, we will be bringing a resolution to the council to carry these items forward. Because, just because we weren't able to spend them prior to June thirtieth doesn't mean that we don't need to carry forward sidewalk money, or guardrail money, or paving money. It's just the way some of the projects lined up will carry them forward to the next fiscal year. We don't typically bring you carry-forward requests for line items such as excess salary that wasn't expended due for whatever reason, or supplies didn't get used in photocopying, or telephone, or postage. We left those laps, and that money flows back into the general fund. But any of the capital ones that we've identified, we do want to carry those forward so that they can be used for their intended purpose. Now, this document that I'm going to pass out to you should look familiar to you, because I handed it out within my budget presentation on April twenty-fifth. And I'll just give that a minute to let that get around to all of you. So to refresh your memory, this was targeted towards some areas within the budget that I wasn't able to fund, or coming into the close of this fiscal year, that I've alerted you that we are going to have some overages on, but that I feel either A, we need to cover the overages, or B, there's some items that I would like to fund, there just wasn't room within the budget. And the three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand that I'm speaking of in the first paragraph was the proceeds, net proceeds, from the sale of the Lakeport Fire Station. So that's similar to the five-hundred-thousand-dollar amount, or close to it, that I spoke of a few minutes ago, that is in the proposed contingency for next fiscal year. That amount was in the budget for the current fiscal year and is sitting there, and recommendations of reallocating that, and not letting that one-time money lapse into the general fund, but putting it towards some, what I like to refer to as one-and-off expenses. So the first sixty-five thousand, as we've spoken of, is targeted to the Department of Public Works, forty thousand for just the overage and the winter maintenance. We had it from a very rough plowing and sanding year. And then also, within the Public Works Department, we had two longtime employees who left. Typically, we look to have individual departments come up with a, on larger end-of-career checks that are cut. We typically look for the department to come up with about a half of the dollars towards that, within either operational savings, or by a new hire coming in, starting at a lower rate than a senior employee leaving type of thing. In this case, there were two, so I'm looking to do twenty-five thousand dollars for the accrued leave to help make the department whole, along with forty thousand for winter maintenance. We do have two separate reserve accounts for those items as well. So if I wasn't requesting it to come out of the one-time proceeds, we do have an accrued leave account that the council has funded with some surplus monies, or some one-time monies over the years. And we also have a winter stabilization account, where typically we have moved money in from the winter maintenance account, when we've had a very easy year, as far as that budget goes. So the recommendation is to use it out of here. And you can see the other ones out of there. The Court Street Bridge Replacement, as Wes spoke to, that would be our commitment for what we anticipate, our twenty percent share of the bridge replacement cost. That'll get us into the queue. It'll show the state DOT that we're serious about getting that bridge into the mix. It probably will be out somewhere at around twenty, twenty-four, or twenty-five, if I had to guess right now. But it gets us in the queue, and it gets us set up for a state eighty percent match on that bridge. So that would be the purpose of that.
So, if I may, we need to take that money and put it in a form of escrow, and it's going to sit there until twenty, twenty-five, before it's actually accessed and used for the work on the bridge?
In some cases, we're using some now for the engineer and design work, so it's not all sitting there. But we have to start developing the plans, so that the state can assist, and then identifying the total cost, so that they're able to budget for their eighty percent match. But yes, typically, you're getting in the queue. It doesn't mean necessarily you have to get your entire twenty percent up there, but we know that we're going to have some design and engineering work to get us to the final number, and that's how we'd like to target it there. We're also doing the, what's the other bridge that we're doing? Academy Street Bridge shortly thereafter. So we're going to start the funding process for the Court Street Bridge now, and probably in a year or two, we'll come back and seek a similar dollar amount for the Academy Street Bridge. And again, we leverage eighty percent state funds through the State Bridge Aid Program, which for the most part has been capped at about six million dollars in available funds on any given year. So not a lot of bridges can get done, although when the state has had some surplus in recent years, they have put some extra money towards that to help kind of lessen the number of red-listed bridges that are in the queue there.
And is that a red-listed bridge that we're looking at?
That, I don't think is red-listed at this point, no.
Langley Brook is the one we asked for this year is red-listed.
That's red-listed, and that's, we're working in conjunction with a developer there of a project that's going through the planning process right now. So they're, we may be looking to leverage some funds out of that as well.
Thank you.
The traffic signal improvements are what Councillor Hamill had been speaking to, with some of the countdown signals and the chirps and different things at the intersection. And as I, you know, pointed out to him, a lot of these intersections are twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars, depending on the overall needs. And it's just, especially this year for the Public Works budget, it wasn't just as simple as going out and finding fifty thousand dollars to take care of two intersections. So we'd like to allocate the hundred thousand towards that. Thirteen thousand in the, for the fire department, for the brush pump unit, which has outlived its life, and has a need to get into some hard-to-reach places to attack brush fires in remote locations. The thirty-five thousand for police portable radios. We had thirty-five thousand in the prior year. We were at the end of our useful life of the portable radios, in terms of the manufacturer supporting it with replacement parts. So in working with Chief Canfield, we said if we funded half of the needed replacements in the current year, which we did, we could take those portable radios out of use, but have them for spare parts, to help support the other half of the radios that we weren't replacing this fiscal year until we were able to fund. And this is a situation of, sometimes we try to step a position in partway through the year, as we talked about with a school resource officer or something. This is a way of trying to step in, you know, a seventy thousand dollar expense over two years, and make it, make it work within the budget. So that will complete the entire replacement of portable radios. Twenty-two thousand for a police evidence drying room and armory ventilation. The armory room is also doubling as the evidence room, or they're conjoined, and there's not great ventilation to exhaust some of the aromas that might be coming out of the evidence room, is how I will describe it. So some of the working conditions in there, and the need to make up the air, need to be addressed along, I'll just leave it at that. So it's the evidence room and the armory ventilation need some attention. Also, the Sally Port, with the way they're making transport vans these days, you've probably seen them, they come out now a lot taller, and that's the model that's available versus what it used to be. So a tall van does not necessarily fit through the Sally Port and be able to lock that down and be secure for everyone's safety, so we need to make some modifications there. And then the net remainder out of all those dollars was twenty-two thousand dollars to transfer to the non-capital reserve account, of which, when I wrote this, had a balance of a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand and change. And I don't think we've reduced anything out of that since this April twenty-fifth memo. So that would, that would put that at around a hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand in the balance, if you took these recommendations. Additionally, there were a couple of recommendations, again, sister recommendations, if you will, to the budget. We'd already spoken of transferring sixty-five thousand dollars out of the school impact fee for freeing up some cap space for the city. The police department additionally is looking for an evidence drying station. A lot of times, things are coming in wet, needing to preserve evidence. They're coming in, in some cases, body fluids and other things that need to be controlled properly. Some of the locations that are trying to dry evidence now are not appropriate materials. They're porous materials, so you don't know what might be getting into certain materials. So we'd be looking to use some of the police impact fees for that purchase. And then the parks and recreation, as you can see in the budget, the request was for fifteen thousand dollars. At the time, they had about fourteen thousand in the impact fees. We have since transferred with council approval about half of that out there to do that final basketball court surfacing coming up in the next couple of weeks, in conjunction with the first two. So right now, there's only seven thousand and something in there. So I'd kind of reduce that amount, and it would just be something that we could transfer out, seven thousand. And this just goes to replace worn-out playground equipment as priority arises in a variety of the playgrounds in the city. So that's just a recap of what was presented, but I think now that you've had a chance to go through the budget book and see how it ties into some areas that I was not able to recommend funding for, how they work together with some one-time dollars.
I have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
If I could. Anybody else first? One is about the playground equipment. I noticed that that ranked second by the CIP committee, for a modest amount of money, and yet it didn't make the city manager's list. Why?
I think part of what I looked at is I knew we had a source of money in impact fees that maybe the CIP committee wasn't focusing on. So at that time, there was fourteen thousand in the impact fees. So I was trying to find a way to fund a highly requested priority, at the same time working with the confines of putting together a really difficult budget. Separately, and Councillor Baer lobbied for some money a few years ago in a separate carry-forward account, there was about six-
There's some money that was allocated in the non-capital reserve that's, there's a portion, if not all of it. I want to say it was fifteen thousand.
For?
Playground.
Okay. But I think there's, I think there's a carry-forward specific to Wyatt Park that Councillor Baer helped target some money when we did the revamping of that playground a few years ago. And I also believe a portion of that money came from maybe a neighborhood association group, or a parkhouse-type of group, that turned that money over to the city, in particular for Wyatt Park, because that's where it was gentrified.
Yeah, I think they went out of business, didn't they?
They did go out of business, but they turned over whatever remaining funds the association had towards that. So there is-
That's just under seven thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, is there a fifteen thousand dollars somewhere to meet this request?
Not that I have.
Okay, you have seven.
I, if we use the impact fees, there's seven, and there is some money dedicated specifically for Wyatt Park in a little bit under seven as well.
Okay. Second question is, I thought I heard you say that all of the department requests that went through the CIP process are represented on this page.
Yes.
So where are, for example, where are items three through nine?
Some of those could be water or sewer projects, which would show up in the water and sewer budget. So I can get you the complete list of a hundred, I don't know if it was a hundred or something, but-
No, it was like seventy.
Seventy-something projects. But some of those would be water and sewer projects.
That obviously ranked very high.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think the thinking of protecting our quality of life and our resources in our tourism industry for water and sewer ranked very high with the CIP committee.
In fact, out of the first twenty, twenty-five, there aren't very many on this list here.
A high number are for protecting our lakes and our drinking water.
Okay, anybody else have any questions about the capital budget?
Just the last page I'll reference, and it's a thirty-second one, is on page nineteen. Well, actually, I've got, I've actually got to dig into one more thing that ties in with page nineteen. So page nineteen would be where we have any additional capital that we're recommending to be bonded. So you can see, there were two projects that, based on the dollar amount, that were targeted to be bonded. We did not recommend replacing fire engine number two. We did recommend the Union Ave improvements at the two-and-a-half million dollars. So as it stands, within this budget book, there's one project slated to be bonded. I do have to turn you back to page eleven just for a minute, and Councillor Cheney's going to help me out with this one if I get into trouble. But for those of you who were on the council for a number of years, you will recall there was a joint project for public safety, communication, citywide, police and fire, to replace some of our towers and our ability to transmit. And back three years ago, or longer, when we started the process, the expected project cost was about four-hundred-and-fifty, or four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. Again, it wasn't an immediate need that we were going to be in a failure situation in one year, and our plan was to start putting away a hundred thousand dollars a year and save for it over four to five years. So we have done that for two prior years. We have two-hundred thousand dollars sitting there in an account targeted for that. There is a hundred thousand dollars in this proposed budget to continue funding that for year three. So where we are today now is, in addition to those communications for police and fire, which one is analog and one is digital, and they can live in the same area, but they are different technologies, they operate on different frequencies. Additionally, the dispatch center, the dispatch equipment at the police station is- Additionally, the dispatch center, the dispatch equipment at the police station is out of date. We've had some failures on it. This is, last year was the last calendar year. It was supported by the manufacturer and there are very few replacement parts sitting around. And the police department was encouraged to buy some up and stick them away in the closet should the need arise to, to get a repair because our vendor was not guaranteeing the availability of replacement parts. So all of a sudden this year, if you look on the capital page under the police department, you'll see that a police dispatch upgrade item showed up for the first time in the amount of 371,000 dollars. Wasn't something that was in the mix three years ago when we started this plan of how to save for 500,000 dollars. And getting everybody together and working with our vendor and bringing Counselor Chini in with his background in dispatch and 911 and understanding the lingo, and he was great to connect us with a Motorola person, which these are all Motorola parts, even though they are apples and oranges, it's all Motorola. And we brought in the vendor and talked about where we're going to house them. We're talking about getting an extra location to cover some areas that we have dead spots in, up on the water tower and in the weirs at the Meredith Bay Development. We're talking about doing some backup duplication with repeaters. We're talking about adding additional hardware into some locations that we have police communications, but we don't currently have fire communications, one being at the hospital to give some better coverage into some, inside some of the taller buildings here in the downtown. And we think in working through this that for both police and fire on communications and dispatch, that we're going to do it right. We're going to have some economy of savings by doing it, if we can, at the same time while installation is there. Doing some plug-and-play, there'll be space in some of the housing stations that was going in for police. There's room for fire. At some point, if we wanted to update Public Works Communications for their transmission, sometimes for day-to-day, sometimes in emergencies, they need to jump on the frequency, there's space to add them in at a later date with, again, kind of a plug-and-play with having all of the antennas and the signal repeaters already in place. So this now collectively, with everything we need, talked through, verified, a second set of eyes at Motorola, looking at it with our local vendor, we're working with all the chiefs. This is about a million-dollar project collectively to do it right. So we feel we should do it right. We should do it right now. The proposed plan would be, we're already been putting away 100,000 dollars a year for three years. So from my perspective, that 100,000 dollars is built into the budget. To continue putting away 100,000 dollars for the next several years doesn't add any additional burden to the budget, so to speak. We would, if this 100,000 stays here and on July 1 or whenever the budget's adopted, we have 300,000 in cash. We would use that cash towards the million-dollar project and go out and get quotes for a 700,000 dollar bond for either a seven-year or a 10-year period and pay the entire system back out of continuing to fund the existing 100,000 dollars that we've done each year for the last three years. So no real new impact on requiring to put new money into the budget, but it certainly will have an impact on tying up that placeholder, if you will, for a period of years versus we thought by two more years from now, we thought maybe it would have been paid off.
Committing to keep putting that 100,000 dollars-
Yes, but it's built in. But we feel this gives the backup, it covers dead spots, it gets the latest technology for police. And even if Lakes Region Mutual Fire Aid were to upgrade their system, which I believe now is five or six years old, they would be upgrading with the same technology that we currently have and will be upgrading to. So there's no risk of all of a sudden Lakes does something and three years from now, what we just put in for the fire, which is really the small piece, the fire piece of it is only around 120 or 130,000 dollars, I believe. The lion's share is going away from copper wire, which is what we're using right now for police, and going to the microwave and the repeaters and the digital system and the new dispatch and having some duplication in there for hopefully no downtime. And I'll defer to Counselor Chini if I missed any key points and-
I, I think the only point I would add is the figures are not to exceed figure. There's a good chance that with some work with Motorola, we can even bring that dollar amount down some. I don't think it'll be substantial, but some. I, I want to reinforce what the manager said about its being critical. The radio equipment is failing miserably. They're having problems on almost a weekly basis. It's time to fix it.
What's the, what's the shelf life of the new equipment?
Should be 15 years.
15?
What's what?
The shelf life. What's the shelf life of the new equipment?
Should be somewhere between 10 and 15 years.
Okay. And you've looked at this stuff and you're saying it's going now and we've got to do something there.
It's going downhill fast. And as the manager suggested, people are stockpiling parts because the manufacturer no longer makes parts. And if we don't stockpile the right one, I mean, it'll cost us a significant amount of money just to stockpile parts.
So we're going to exceed that 3.2 figure, aren't we?
Yeah, I mean, typically, I mean, generally, we would go out and probably bond an additional 700,000 if this has your support or whatever that not to exceed number is. And instead of seeing it on this page as a cash capital outlay, it'll transfer over to page 19 and you'll see that we go out for, you know, we're going to bid it for a seven-year and 10-year, which is well below the, you know, the useful life, which we think is, as Counselor Chini said, is 10 to 15. We'll look at where the numbers come in and how that makes it affordable. I think those of you who know me, I always try to, you know, go fairly close to what we can make work rather than trying to stretch it out and pay more in interest costs. And again, that frees up space in future years. But I think we need to do it now. The only real change is that 100,000 dollars would move out of here. We would show it in on a debt-financed one under the page 19.
So you'd be predict minimal first-year expense in terms of debt service?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be changing the 100,000 that we're putting in the budget right now, whatever.
Part of that 100,000 would be to pay debt service.
We'd go to buy, we'd go to buy that down. So rather than bonding a million, we could bond the 700,000 instead and not have to go out and bond the whole million. And depending where the rates come in, we can look at that. And Donna and I have spoken and basically with your general consensus tonight that that makes sense, we want to go out and start getting bids for the rates with a stipulation that anybody bidding is going to hold that rate until at least August 1st because we know we can adopt the budget up until the last meeting in July. So I don't want to get a rate now when someone says, oh, it's good for 30 days and we don't pull the trigger on it until the end of July, so.
Anybody object to the general plan?
I guess I don't object, but I just wonder if, if we've got 100,000 and we know we're going to have another tough budget year, is just, you know, bond it for the life of the equipment and we have three years of debt service already saved. I mean, I'd look at the quotes at either way and see what the incremental cost is.
And, and we're going to local banks and also there's a program through Motorola that can do it. So we've got, you know, several options to look at for the most competitive rate.
So we, so we'd need less than 100,000 a year?
What I'm saying is we-
Service of debt.
Yeah, I mean, we just take, we've got three years of debt service sort of stockpiled, if you will.
That's right.
And rather than-
That's right.
Placing a greater strain on a future year.
Yep.
Even it out over the-
And we certainly would be bringing, if we do, you know, debt this and Counselor Littman's the chair of the finance committee, any of the rates that we bring to the council and they need to go through the finance committee to issue, to issue that debt anyway. So we'll be going that route.
Okay. Anything else?
That's what I've got for you tonight. Thank you.
Other questions?
Oh, I got one comment. I noticed that on page, where am I at? Yeah, the supplement that you gave was the April 25, 2015 memo. I just note that once again, we're shifting 65,000 dollars to the school department for freeing up the budget space for the city under the tax cap. I just want to make a note of that, not seeking out comments on that, but you know where I'm coming.
About what? Say again?
Huh?
I didn't get your point.
The impact fee that could have gone to this, to the, which is going to the school.
Yeah.
Then in turn, because they're getting that money, they're helping contribute towards a small portion of the county escalation. So I think, you know, whereas other times we've lent money to the schools to make things work, they're, they're stepping up to the line and helping us.
Mr. Mayor, let me make it plainer.
Please.
I'm complaining again about the impact of the impact fees. I mean, of the tax cap. That's what I'm complaining about. So-
I'm shocked.
So, you know.
I figured that, but I didn't understand the point you were making.
Well, I just-
It's their money, right? We've collected it, but it's school money.
We're transferring impact fees to the school department in the amount of 62,000 dollars.
But that was money-
So that everybody can meet the tax cap.
But that's their money. We can't spend it. It's set aside for schools.
I think his, I think his point is the tax cap, not it's their money.
I'm like, you know.
That if it weren't for the tax cap, they wouldn't have to use it? Is that what you're saying? It would stay there?
Let's end it.
No. Just for your, just for your benefit, Mayor, I don't understand a word of it either. So there's two of us.
I guess his point was if it weren't for the tax cap, it could stay put and they wouldn't have to use it.
My point is the tax cap is a bad policy, continues to be a bad policy, and we keep having to shift things because of the tax cap.
Okay.
That's my point.
Okay. All right. Any other business? All right. We do have need, as I said earlier, for non, two non-public sessions. So the first, both of them have to do with, I don't have the language in front of me, RSA 91A, paragraph three, I think it is, concerning the reputation of an individual not a member of this board. So we need a motion to go into non-public session for that reason. I started to say Colonel Hosmer. Where did I get that from? Counselor Hosmer. Make us a motion second. My Counselor Haynes would ask the clerk to please call the roll for a yes or no vote.
Counselor Chini?
Yes.
Counselor Bounds?
Yes.
Counselor Littman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
And Counselor Hosmer?
Yes, Colonel.
Colonel Hosmer. Mayor Engler?
Yes. All right. We are in non-public session. Cheryl, a second here.